Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the May 22 school committee meeting. Do our roll call. Tristan, everybody is here? Thank you. And before we move into the pledge, we just wanted to make a quick announcement. It is with great sadness to share that former longstanding member Peggy Kane has passed away. Our thoughts and prayers are with her family and friends at this time. As many of you know, Peggy dedicated herself to the town of Wilmington as a leader and advocate for children. She worked tirelessly to improve education for all children and served on the Wilmington School Committee for nineteen years. During her tenure on our committee, she served as the chair for nine years.
A former English teacher at Medford High School for thirty-five years. Peggy's passion was always to promote an equal education for all. She not only focused on the functioning of the schools in general, but rather the positive development and accomplishments of the students. She believed that every student had a talent and the ability to shine. Peggy was a major asset to the building of this state-of-the-art Wilmington high school. She dedicated countless hours, volunteer hours, to all the voting, rationalizing, and planning that went into this long process.
Just last year, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees recognized Peggy Kane's exemplary service to the town of Wilmington with the Lifetime Achievement Award. We are deeply grateful for Peggy's many contributions to our schools and the community. To end, I'm going to share two quotes that we collected during the nomination process for that MASC award. Karen Campbell, Director of Recreation, said, "Peggy spreads joy while accomplishing very important work. It is always fun to be around her, and people are drawn to Peggy." And our library director, Tina Stewart, told us that Peggy Kane's belief in the importance of giving back to one's community is exemplified in her many years of volunteerism and her leadership as president of the Friends of the Library. It is an honor to have worked with someone who is a true advocate for education and literacy. Following the pledge of allegiance tonight, please join me in a moment of silence to honor Peggy Kane and her many contributions to our schools and the town of Wilmington. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Somebody wearing red, white, and blue.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please join me in the moment of silence. Thank you very much. The first thing on our agenda tonight is Girl Scout Troop 87002. They are juniors from Wilmington, and their leaders Pam Southern and Julie Hall are here. And I think Mrs. Hall is going to introduce our speakers.
Good evening.
Good evening.
And I'm Julie Hall. Pam is my co-leader. We've brought our fifth grade Girl Scout troop here tonight because they are working on their inside government badge, and we think it's important for them to learn not only how our government operates at the federal and state level, but also at the community level. We want them to understand that they have a voice that deserves to be heard and that they can make impactful changes in their own community and help you to make the decisions that are going to affect their day-to-day lives. So, thank you very much for Mrs. Burns and Mrs. Bryson and Mrs. Newhouse for joining us early tonight to answer some of the girls' questions and help them to get a better understanding of what your role is in our community. One of the projects that the girls can do when they are at the junior level in Girl Scouts is to earn a bronze award. It's the highest award available in Girl Scouts at this age. To earn this award, they need to identify a problem in the community, brainstorm ideas on how they can address it, reach out to people in the town, and figure out who can help them achieve their goals, and then execute their plan. And we had two teams this year who've worked countless hours, months and months, on a couple of great projects, and we've invited them to share a little bit of what they've been up to in the last few months and to share some of their accomplishments. We're very proud of their hard work. Thank you.
You guys have first? Okay. First, we have Sarah D'Angelo and Sofia Tentindo.
And I'm Sophia.
For our bronze award project, we've raised awareness of food insecurity by making presentations to teach younger girls about this topic.
We presented to my younger sister's Daisy Troop, Troop 82787, and to our Girl Scout leaders, Brownie Troop, Troop 79092.
We wanted them to have an education on this topic because we think it is important.
We also got donations for birthday bags to give to the Wilmington Food Pantry for kids who don't have enough money to celebrate their birthdays, as any kid should. To create the birthday bags, we collected donations from kids and their parents, and we got a big donation from our Girl Scout Troop, Troop 87002. With the donations we collected, we were able to make thirty-six birthday bags. In each bag, we included cake mix frosting, sprinkles and candles, and a gift card.
Next, we have Sophia Cable, Pravia Vermesh, Allison Hall, and Olivia Saragosa. Mrs. Hall, do you think they want to put their poster up? Over here, we didn't get, I don't think we, they didn't really show us. Sure. Thank you. And girls, if you want to sit in the front four seats here, you're more than welcome to do that if that's easier for you.
Can we just put this here?
Sure.
We decided to do our project on internet safety because many of the kids in our elementary level have phones and have access to the internet, and they don't know how to use it safely, so we did a project to help solve that solution.
We interviewed some experts on the subject, including the Middlesex District Attorney, Mary Ann Ryan, Ms. Peachey, our school librarian, and Officer Stavro.
As Pravia already said, the video teaches kids how to stay safe online, and it's targeted to grades two to five, and it's approximately thirty-five minutes, which we think is perfect for one period, which is forty-five minutes. Again, as Sophia said, we interviewed Mary Ann Ryan, Officer Stavro, and Mrs. Peachey. We also interviewed ten students from the North, and we did that because we felt that we wanted to get a student's perspective and adult's perspective. In our video, we also included a segment that's called "Did You Know?", and we took the Wilmington Middle School survey from 2017 and a survey that we created that the North took, and we put that into. We also, we edited, and we used WCTV software, and we learned a lot about TV production and social media through it, and the editing took a long time.
We created our video to help educate students second through fifth on how to be safe online, and we've reached out to our principals, Mr. Straznick from the Woburn Street, Ms. McMenamin from the North Intermediate, and asked them to help us share this video with our students, with the students and parents, so that they can learn from it, too. We are here tonight to ask you to help us spread this video and the knowledge in it to all the students of our district and our community to help them know how to be safe online. We think it'll be very educational and helpful. We have the link here that we can give to you.
And I've already seen it circulating. I haven't been able to tune into it, and so we'll make sure that we pass that.
It was just posted last week for the first time, and they've already had over four hundred views.
Oh, wonderful.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Are there any, is that the last group? Are there any questions or comments from the board?
I would just like to see your poster, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Oh, wonderful. And that's, is that everyone you interviewed and?
Yes.
Wonderful. Great job. Wonderful job.
All right. You are, I think, you're more than welcome to stay for the, for the meeting if you'd like to see what happens on the, on the.
They might last for a little bit.
Yeah. Well, you stay as long as you'd like, but we won't be insulted if you, when you decide you're, it's time for you to go. Okay. We're going to move into approval of items by consensus. First, we have approval of minutes, May 8, 2019. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Newhouse, second, Mrs. Burns, all in favor? That is unanimous. We have approval of out-of-state field trip. Wilmington High School World Languages Trip to Costa Rica, April 15 through the 25th, 2020. You have a packet. Any questions or comments for Dr. Brand? I'm guessing right? Questions or comments on this?
I just have to say, I love these type of trips for our students and the ability for our staff to, not the ability, the, just, the dedication our staff has to broadening our students' view of their world and giving them these various and unique experiences. I think it's a wonderful field trip.
Thank you.
I'd love to just also add as a comment, the, it's world language, but it also involves science and combining those two. I think it's great.
Absolutely. Thank you. Excellent. We have a motion to approve the out-of-state field trip. Mr. Fenely, seconded by Mr. Samaha, all in favor? That is unanimous. Okay. We have some warrants. I will take them in this order. G434, 435, 436, R242, and 243, L84, 85, and FS34. And you'll see, we included what each of those stand for for some of our newer members, and I know we have some guests, so I will just quickly read that off so that you know what we're saying when we say G and R. So, G refers to general, R refers to revolving, L refers to local, and FS refers to food service. Do I have a motion to accept those? Mrs. Newhouse, seconded by Mrs. Burns, all in favor? That is unanimous. Payroll, ending 5/20/2019. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Burns, seconded by Mr. Ragsdale, all in favor? That is unanimous. We have CB, Circuit Breaker 24. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Newhouse, seconded by Mr. Fenely, all in favor? That is two abstentions, Mr. Bjork and Mrs. Burns. And then Warren, sped 47 and sped 48. Do I have a motion? Mr. Ragsdale, seconded by Mr. Samaha, all in favor? And that is three abstentions, Mrs. Burns, Mrs. Newhouse, and Mr. Bjork. Okay? And that brings us to our superintendent's report.
Thank you very much, and good evening, everyone. There are a few items to provide you an update under Section 5. I will go in order. There are a number of items that accompany this in your packet and some that I will speak to as well. First off, starting with the Director of Technology and Digital Learning Search Announcement. As outlined in, as included, sorry, in the packet, is an announcement, press release for the new Director of Information Technology and Digital Learning that went out to the community a little bit earlier this month. It's my pleasure to be able to share that Mr. Ken Lord has accepted my offer to assume this role effective July 1, 2019. Mr. Lord has twenty-five years of public education experience, serving roles within the area of educational technology throughout the state. He began his career not too far from here as the Director of Information Technology and as a network administrator in this role with the Bedford Public Schools, and currently he serves as the Executive Director of Technology and Operations with the Marblehead Public Schools, where he has served since 2012. In his current role, Mr. Lord supervises almost fifty staff spanning both the Technology and Facilities Departments, and he manages and routinely oversees the procurement process there in the district. He has been also instrumental in planning for the launch of their one-to-one Chromebook Program Initiative at the high school and has recently participated in the Chief Technology Officer Certification Program. And so is with great pleasure and much excitement that we look forward to Mr. Lord joining us in just a couple of weeks. Woburn Street Elementary School Assistant Principal Search Update is the second item listed. Nothing in the packet, but just to bring to your attention and to provide a brief update, the search is ongoing. In fact, as we speak this week, interviews are taking place as part of the screening, with the Screening Search Committee. It's my anticipation that we will have finalists that will be advanced forward in the process. And just of note, I have been speaking with Ms. Suzanne Sullivan, who is, as you'll know, the new principal coming on board soon for Woburn Street, and she will be also very much involved in the search for obviously this important position, and I'll keep you posted as we move forward. The Coordinator of Special Education is the third item. In your packet is the job description that accompanies that. We are in the process right now of gearing up for that search, and it's in there for informational purposes. Again, through the support of the school committee here not that long ago, and as part of the budget process for fiscal year 20, we have approved the position of Coordinator of Special Education. Again, thank you to your support. In short, this role is, this, rather, this role will oversee the development and coordination of district-wide special education programming to meet the needs of our students here in the district. This position will assist, this person, rather, will assist the Director of Student Support Services, for whom also maintains the continual oversight and responsibility to lead special education. So, an item for you there, and again, I'll keep you posted as that search progresses. The fourth item, Executive Session Posting. On May 2, the school committee held an executive session under Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21, for the purposes of hearing a grievance from the WTA. I wanted to briefly share with the committee and the community the fact that the agenda was properly prepared and forwarded to Town Hall, as is the protocol that we routinely take. Unfortunately, despite these efforts, the public notice of the meeting was never posted, and that came to, that did come to our attention. It's understood that the burden is on us and myself as superintendent. As a result, we are declaring that we are in error this evening in accordance with the notice as outlined on this meeting's agenda for tonight. And in order to remedy the situation, the school committee will enter Executive Session Two, amongst other things, hear the WTA grievance again. And I did want to make sure that I brought that to your attention. And finally, this evening, a middle school student representative to the school committee. There's nothing in your packet specifically about this item, but I wanted, after hearing from some members of the committee around this idea or thoughts, to expand our student representative. And, as you know, we have a high school representative here, which I think is terrific to provide updates on school-related activity, particularly at the high school. I do know that other districts have a middle school representative as well, and it really was just to try and get a sense of the committee in terms of whether or not that's something that you would perhaps want me to explore for next school year. So, with that, happy to take any comments or questions.
I was, for a minute there, I thought it was a typo. What do you mean, middle school? I know this is the time that we'll probably be looking for a new student rep come for the fall. I think it's a great idea. I think my question to you, and this may be, again, too early, because there's, I know there's further investigation that you would need to do. Do you know of other districts? How does that work? Is it a high school student one week and the middle school student the next? Or do they jointly present? I was just kind of curious. I guess there's no rhyme or reason to how we do it, but I just didn't, that'd be something I'd be interested in learning more about, too, to, you know, learning the fluidity of how we engage both.
It's a good question, not one that I've really thought of in terms of how we might approach that. I would imagine we perhaps could find both approaches that is together or staggered. Certainly open to thoughts or ideas if it is something you want to move forward with.
I'm still getting used to this.
Out of chair?
Sorry, girls. I'm still figuring out this role. I think, well, part of the idea, I think, would be nice for the middle school student to hear what's happening at the high school, to sort of generate some interest. So, I might be inclined to keep them together so that the middle school can then report back to the middle school students about what's to come. But I also could see, we only have Allison every, you know, so it might make sense to stagger it as well. But I think we can cross that bridge when we, when we find a middle school representative if we, if we move in that direction. Other comments or questions about that idea or thought? Mr. Bjork?
I would just say, I'm all for it. I think the more we can get our students involved in this, the better, the more engagement, the better.
I agree with Mr. Bjork.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd also echo that.
Great.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Great.
Okay. And there is no old business tonight. Someone moved right into new business. 7A, we have the first reading of the strategic plan report, which I'll pass over to you.
Thank you. Again, it's my pleasure this evening to have the opportunity to share with this committee and the Wilmington community a draft of the newly created strategic plan for the Wilmington Public Schools. As you know, earlier this year, upon recognizing the fact that our plan here in the district had expired, I made a commitment to this committee and to this community to engage our larger Wilmington community in the vitally important work of overseeing the development of our next plan, one that will serve as the focal point of our decision-making, help shape our actions, and guide the deployment of our resources and service to students here in Wilmington. While this may have been a commitment that I made to the committee, the fact is that this effort could never have been possible without the support, commitment, and involvement of many, many people throughout the community and our district staff. Almost fifty individuals contributed to this effort, many of whom are here this evening, and I'd like to take this opportunity to recognize them and extend to them a huge thanks for all of their work that was not, as I've said many times, anticipated, I know, when this school year began. In no particular order, thanks goes to, and I believe, who are in attendance this evening: Melissa Durr, Michelle Juliana, who are community representatives, Jen Fidler, WHS art teacher and CTL, Charlotte King, Director of our Wildwood Early Childhood Center, Christine McMenamin, Principal of the North Intermediate School, Jonathan Miranda, Assistant Principal here at WHS, Christine Murray, Coordinator of Behavioral Health, Teresa Pietro, WHS Foreign Language Teacher, Jeanette Quirk, AP at the, at the middle school, Jackie Raffey, Assistant Director of Administration and Finance, Kristen Walsh, Director of the Butwell ECC, Laura Stinson, Woburn School Phys Ed Teacher, Chris Phillips, AP here at WHS, Lisa Murphy, K-5 STEM Leader, Sheila Burke, fifth grade teacher at the North, Dr. Regan, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Staff Development, Mr. Rozier, Assistant Superintendent for Administration and Finance, and of course, Ms. Bryson and Mr. Ragsdale as representatives of the school committee, and last but certainly not least, hopefully here at this point in time, two of our student representatives who greatly served on the committee, Taylor Buska and Ashley Dansky, Den, Denkessi? I hope I said that. I'm sorry. Who are also here this evening. In your packet is the draft plan, and I say draft, and I use that word purposefully because of the fact that it is a draft. It's presented here to the committee as effectively a first read, considering it along the lines of any other document that, policy or recommendation that you would approve. And so, with the opportunity to present to you, as well as the Wilmington community, an overview of the draft plan. There is a more extensive memo in the packet, and this evening we have a presentation for you that does include a number of slides, but I think this is so important that with the opportunity to present this, it will take some, some time to go through. It's with that that I'd like to invite to help in this presentation, because this is not my plan, this is our plan collectively, and so I want to make sure that you hear from folks who had extensive involvement in it. Ms. Walsh will is here, Ms. Stinson, Mr. Phillips, Ms. Murphy, and Ms. Burke, along with our two student representatives, if you could kindly come forward. I've twisted their arm. I promised too many things to be here tonight, but they so kindly agreed to not just be present to support the rollout of this plan, but also to speak to the different parts of it as we roll this out. And so, I was going to join them, but I know it's getting a little tight down there, so I might stay here. We will post this presentation afterwards and make it available to members of the community who might wish to spend a little time digging into it, and it's with that that I will turn it over to Ms. Walsh.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having us. So, as Dr. Brand mentioned, this is a draft of the 2019, thank you, 2022 strategic plan. As you mentioned, the previous district strategic plan has expired in June 2018. One of Dr. Brand's many goals when joining the district was to establish a new strategic plan by including all of the stakeholders. Additionally, we reviewed the current values and mission statement. To assist in this process, the request from the school committee was to include an outside consultant to help guide our work, and it was approved, and we thank you for that because we found that to be extremely helpful in this journey. After a call for volunteers, two teams were developed to assist with our work. There was the leadership team and the planning team. As you can see up on the screen, the strategic planning team consisted of ten parents, guardians, or in community members, eight teachers and staff, five Wilmington Public School administrators, four current students, and two school committee members. The strategic plan leadership team included twenty-four administrators, seven Wilmington Middle School, High School curriculum team leaders, and we also had six district liaisons. During this time, we had meeting dates. The leadership team met three times from December 2018 through March of 2019. The planning team had two meetings, again, December 2018 to March 2019, and together we combined both the leadership teams and the planning teams, most recently in May of During the process, we used a SWOT analysis. SWOT stands for strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. We used this protocol to identify strengths and weaknesses in our district's current practices, culture, and planning. It also helped us to determine what opportunities and resources may aid us in our planning, future planning process, and it also helped to identify threats or obstacles that may interfere or get in the way of our success. After completing the SWOT analysis, we were able to gather helpful information, which guided us to create a very in-depth, comprehensive strategic plan.
So, through the district planning process, we were working to create our plan together. We analyzed our district performances. We had stakeholder feedback from the schools, the students, the community. We looked at our data trends and patterns, and then as we also participated in the protocol of envisioning our future in the Wilmington Public Schools. Once we looked at finalizing the plan, we are looking to align our supports to the school improvement plans, our educator goals, the budget for the school district, and the resources will that then, in fact, bring us to alignment within the district. Then with that, we'll be looking at the third arrow with regards to how we're going to create our action steps to then implement the strategic plan throughout the district and relate it back to the school improvement plans, as well as the teacher and educator plans within the district. We've, this particular slide pretty much is a, is a visual display of all the processes We've, this particular slide pretty much is a, is a visual display of all the processes that we completed throughout the months from December to May with looking at having friend, people from the district plan, the school improvement plans, will all kind of interlink together. And I was fortunate to be part of both the leadership part of the strategic planning process, as well as the community part, and I truly feel that it was an amazing process, and the document that you have before you this evening is, is excellent, and I, I'm really looking forward to the future of the Wilmington Public Schools. And this was from the Department of Education in how we worked at implementing the framework in the planning process to create the strategic plan, and all the steps that we went through, both as a community group in the, in the planning process, as well as in the leadership group in the planning process.
All right. Again, Chris Phillips, I'm the assistant principal of the high school. I have the privilege of having Taylor and Ashley, whom I conscripted to, to attend tonight. They were part of the, the, the process of, in, in the planning groups, so they're going to read through some of the, the mission vision and, and some of the things that, the sort of big ideas that were elements of this plan. So, Taylor.
The mission of the Wilmington Public Schools is to educate and develop students academically, socially, and emotionally to be active civic-minded contributors to our global society. And we created the Wildcat Circle of Values, which is community inclusivity, respect, collaboration, learning, and engagement.
The vision and the aspirations for the students is the Wilmington Public Schools, in conjunction with the community, provides an inclusive, respectful, and collaborative learning environment where all stakeholders are engaged in the development of the whole child. And the theory of action is that if we promote academic success for all learners by providing innovative, student-centered instruction, foster the well-being of each child, promote an inclusive collaborative school and community culture, and improve our school's facilities and technology to provide safe, secure, and flexible learning environments for everybody, then we will develop students academically, socially, and emotionally to be active civic-minded contributors to our global society.
Good job, girls. And as we were discussing too, I've certainly been a part of more than a few planning committees in various places where vision and mission have been created, and I think that those particular ones that, that Taylor and Ashley read were come by very quickly, but also very effectively. They really sort of get at the heart of what, what schools are all about and what this school district is all about. So that's why I was very impressed and very proud to be a part of this process. So the next part of the process were four strategic objectives, which were created as a result of the planning process, objective related to student learning, social emotional learning, creating a culture of inclusion, and creating or improving the school's environment for learning. And so those were four of the major objectives. I won't go into every detail, but you'll, you can read them certainly. And within each one of those objectives, there are a number of different initiatives that would be created to ultimately foster and, and reach those particular objectives. So under the student learning, for example, curriculum alignment, tiered support systems, again, the idea here would be a focus on student learning and a focus on how to use different elements of the public school process to improve student learning. And again, you can certainly read through all of those. The second, the social emotional learning, which is certainly something that's very important and, and a very recent initiative, I would say, among the public schools. The idea is here to improve the opportunities for staff, the capacity for staff and students to better, to be more resilient, to be a better part of, of the school community and be more socially and emotionally engaged in what they're doing. So again, student transitions, which is always one that's very important, and the only recently I've been dealing with, dealing with that transition from eighth to ninth grade, for example, fifth to sixth grade, there are a lot of transitions in Wilmington, so this is certainly one that is very important for us. Number three, culture of inclusion, and yet our third objective, a number of initiatives here focused on building relationships with different areas, with different parts of the community. Obviously, it starts here, but it also includes partnerships like the school business partnership that the high school has now, and to foster environments where outside groups and organizations feel comfortable coming in and participating, and where we can allow for students to learn in, in whatever way they see, they, they can find that's important for them. And then finally, the learning environments, the, the fourth objective. And this really sort of, it's not just a focus on facilities, though facilities is certainly part of that, it's in general looking at a way to improve the facility of the building, but the environment as a whole, to improve student learning and to encourage learners to be more engaged. And for example, you'll see 4.4 technology and coordination, and I think we're hurt off to a good start by hiring a, a, a technology director, so that one is already in process. So as you can see, we've done a lot to sort of generate these objectives and initiatives within the, in the objectives.
And then I will apologize now. Lisa Murphy, she's the STEM coordinator, a little sick, so I will do the best I can, and I apologize for my voice. On May 6th, I was also a good part of both the planning and leadership team, and it was an honor to see both sides of the piece in the plan get productive. But on May 6th, both sides of the team were together in one large meeting, and it really talked about how we can get the community engagement and keep it going, get this plan out into the community, let people hear about it, let them know about it, and how, make sure that it is working, and how we can accomplish that and, and do that. What is the effective timeline for this process? Obviously, in June 19, hopefully in 2019, we will communicate to all the stakeholders what the plan is. In June, we'll craft the action steps, those are still not created. And then obviously, as the school year rolls out, at the open school committee, open house, parent, parent open houses, to hear all the stakeholders here, what our, our plan is. We are, our process is to make it visible, to keep reflecting back to it, publicize it through teacher orientation, faculty meetings, open day addresses, open houses, all school meetings, make it always be public in, in, in the eye of all of the stakeholders. How might the strategic plan process reinforce the wide range of voices that we heard? In this, there were many voices heard throughout this process, which I thought was amazing. We had from senior citizens at the Buzell, you know, heard, the student heard, that through all of that, making sure everyone knows that their voices were heard through surveys, town community forums, building big staff, more student forums, utilizing W C T V, and presenting the plan wherever we can to get, know that the community was heard throughout this process. How might this process strengthen the community? Well, they're going to realize that their voices was heard once they realize and see the plan. They're going to be, there was bits and pieces of everybody's voice throughout this plan as we put it together, this draft. And I think as people read through that draft, they're going to realize, oh, I thought of that, and there was a lot of crossing over from different stakeholders of how all of that is. So I think they're going to finally realize, as the Girl Scout said earlier, everyone's voice is important, and they think this plan does portray that, that everyone's voice within our community of Wilmington was heard throughout developing this plan.
Hi, I'm Sheila Burke, and I was part of the planning process, and I'm going to explain a little bit about the quality review of the plan, which took place on May 6th. When the leadership team and the planning team got together, we were, we were broken into groups to basically review different sections of the draft of the strategic plan. And we had, we had some questions to address, and they are as follows. First of all, does the plan reflect the common visions and themes and how? And the, the team, the team acknowledged that it did that overall. Do the objectives written reflect our identified core values, and the vision provides a common vocabulary for student success that is consistent across stakeholders? For example, there's language used that describes all learners, each student, all students, and that certainly reflects a value of inclusivity, which is an important aspect of, of the strategic plan. In what ways do the plan's initiatives touch the classroom, changing what happens between teachers and students? There are several initiatives in the, in the first, in the first strategic initiative that support student learning and social emotional learning, and also the learning environment, technology, professional development, alignment between, a vertical and horizontal alignment between curriculums, interdisciplinary connections, which promote academic, social, and emotional growth and success, and of course, professional development for the social emotional learning. In what ways does the plan reflect a mix of problem-solving and future-oriented thinking? This, there's a chart included in, on this slide, and basically what it does is it categorizes the, the initiatives that are problem-solving, the initiatives that are future-thinking, and the initiatives that are both. And this is a way to really outline that the strategic plan identifies certain problems and solutions, and it also identifies future thinking. It's not just, it's not just a strategic plan to solve problems, it's, it's a strategic plan to help us grow and be more forward-thinking.
In what ways do the plan's initiatives change what happens between community partners and schools? First and foremost, the change of start times in schools could improve opportunities for students to actively engage in community, in community projects and programs. The need to communicate this shift to all impact, impacted for, there will be a need to communicate this shift to all that are impacted for maximum success, because certainly a change in start times would affect an awful lot of stakeholders. It also provides opportunities for families to become active participants through authentic ways, parent volunteers with Analog at Wilmington High School, career shadowing, class visitors, guest speakers, program sponsorship. There's also outreach and going beyond current relationships, engaging families in multiple meaningful ways to bridge the home and school partnership, and also partnering with library programs to help, to help achieve some of the goals that we have. In what ways does the plan reflect an ambitious vision for the district and community? It incorporates the core values, it addresses the development of the whole child, which is extremely important. We work in conjunction with the community, we're engaging all the stakeholders, we're aligning the vertical and horizontal curriculum, and developing a system of interventions to support all learners. The academic goals are incorporated with social emotional goals, again, focusing on the whole child and a focus on all student populations. And also, there's a focus from kindergarten to, to grade 12, focusing on alignment and consistency through professional development, curriculum, and facilities. And lastly, in what ways do, does the plans, do the plan's initiatives change what happens between families and schools? We anticipate that there will be an increased communication and collaboration, we'll be expanding community partnerships, there'll be a change in, in start time, as I mentioned, which will affect families' routines and schedules. We are promoting a vision and core values, and one of the four strategic objectives includes specific initiatives around engaging, engaging families. There'll be a recognition that communication is a key component of engagement, and a discussion of parent-professional development as well. And Glenn, I think you were going to do the next steps?
Sure, I will.
All right.
So a lot of information condensed into, of course, a rather short period of time, but there are some obvious next steps that emerge that I think are worthy to certainly take a moment to point out. As mentioned at the outset, this, this is a, an important document, obviously, that sets into motion our priorities as a district, and with that, it's my belief and my recommendation that you, as a school committee, would ultimately approve this plan. It's, it's the intention here is for this to be a first read, certainly your thoughts and discussion and feedback, but looking for your hopeful approval at your next meeting on June the 12th. The development of outcomes was mentioned briefly a moment ago. This plan does not include specifically the action planning, and we need to, we need to dig into that and articulate the next steps or actions that will help us realize the outcomes that are expected, and that certainly is going to be work that's going to have to continue. This is the, this is the structure, the framework of the plan, there are some more components to, to flush out, and certainly the action planning is, is just that. The community outreach and engagement, you mentioned that there's a, there's a central inclusion of that as part of the plan as it currently stands, to enhance community engagement, but the community outreach is really what I'm thinking of here in terms of the need for this not to be a document that sits on a shelf in a binder, or just, we refer to periodically around this table, but rather, how do we get the word out there to the community that, of course, this has to begin, and this is not going to be a, a one-off email. We have to be thoughtful around what that looks like, and quite frankly, I think that's my job, on the behalf of the committee here, to work with my team to figure out how we best think about doing that. Alignment with school and educator goal setting, there is, it was mentioned, and it's part of the backbone of the Department of Education's thinking around how this work aligns with our goal-setting, individually as educators, with schools, and of course, it's a district, and so there's that alignment piece that has to happen. And again, something that I see as my role, how do we regularly provide an update on our success? How do we know that we're being effective in moving forward? How do we know that we're measuring and monitoring the things that we set out to do? This comes back to your authorities of the school committee around budget and the approval of resources, and certainly an awful lot of that work is, centers around that. So there are many next steps here to go. This is, this is a beginning, but a very important one at that. I just want to take, if I could, before we open to questions, again, thank you to our presenters for, for being here and for the job that you, you did this evening. Thanks to, again, this committee for your willingness to engage the consultant earlier this year. You'll know that, that was also something that you didn't necessarily count on, but from all accounts, and from those that I've talked to who had the chance to work with Lori Legas, just a great consultant who helped guide this work in a rather short period of time with an awful lot of people. Tristan Dixie, for all of her additional coordinating, a lot went into getting all of these meetings set, and certainly I thank her for that. And with that, happy to open up to questions, comments, or feedback.
Questions, comments? Mrs. Burns?
I think I need a little guidance, or at least some clarification. First, let me sincerely, from the bottom of my heart, thank you for the amount of work and time that was invested in creating this. I've only seen one strategic plan, and it was several years ago when I first came to the board, and there's not enough that can be said for the time invested and the work involved in creating what, what you've just presented us this evening. I, and I just, I just want to rave about that. I'm endearing to the, the work and the time you've all sacrificed to create this. I do need a little clarification, Ms. Burke, if you don't mind, because I don't know if my view on the lan, it's language. I don't know if it's broad enough for what, I know the, you know, the plan is supposed to be a working, living document, as Dr. Brand said. My only concern, and I, and I take, help me understand, I know that we touch upon inclus, inclusivity in all learners, but I think my concern, and it's kind of bothering me, is I don't know if a part of this, and, and a part of some of the focus touches upon diverse learners and diversity in learning skills, and that might be a part of the action piece developed, but I just don't, I don't, I just, forgive me if I can't find the right vocabulary. I just find it's a little too general, doesn't speak to the diverse of learning, because I think part of the, especially with the social emotional piece in learning and the student learning, I think there's a lot of programming and a lot of goals that we'll probably set in the future to meet the diverse needs of our learners and how they learn.
I, I might be able to answer that question.
Thank you.
In a couple of the slides that were categorized by the strategic initiatives, student learning, social and emotional learning, culture of inclusion and learning environment, within each of those slides were, was a, were a number of initiatives, and we didn't necessarily outline every single one of them this evening. But for example, under, under student learning, initiative 1.2, it says tiered support systems, ensure that the district has a system of interventions that support all levels of student need, and that is clearly addressing the diversity of students and being able to reach them where they are. For example, some students only need typical tier-one supports that you would provide in a classroom, some students may need tier-two support, where they may need to get reading support from a, a reading specialist, and some students may need tier-three support, where they would get very individualized support from a special educator, or say, a school counselor, or, or a school psychologist. So that, some of these things that you seem to be concerned about are embedded in detail in, in the different initiatives. I can give you another example.
Could I ask a question then?
Yes, absolutely.
Forgive me for interrupting.
That's okay.
I guess then maybe, does it translate, does that translate well enough for parents? Or is it just safe enough to assume it's captured within, within that I think?
I understand what you're saying. I think that, if I may speak about this?
Sure, then I'll take on.
I think, I think one of the things that, that Glenn is going to work on with his team, when he's communicating this information to the community and to parents in general, I think he's going to also use language that is going to support a lame, you know, the ability for a layman to read some of this information and understand it. And if, and if not, I think that might be a good idea, but I may say so myself.
Thank you, Ms. Burke, for that. Perfect.
I'm so sorry. You know, I, as, as a classroom teacher who teaches inclusion setting classrooms... You know, as a classroom teacher who teaches inclusion setting classrooms, I often find myself in IEP meetings when I use professional jargon, I stop and pause and then I define it. And I think that that's important. I think it's not fair to assume that everyone understands the language. And I think that might, is that where you're going?
Well, speaking to your point, because I find myself in a lot of IEP meetings, myself, and that I find that if it's not in writing, it's not, you can't assume it's going to be captured. And, you know, I'm not uncomfortable with the words "all learners" and "inclusivity", but it's the interpretation various people may perceive in reading it. And that's, but the thing is, you want to keep it, you want to be on point, but general enough to be flexible as you go forth and set initiatives and actions. So, and so I just kind of really needed a place to wrap my, to kind of wrap my head so that going forth, I have a better understanding as to the goals. If those goals, you know, target the areas that we'd like, you know, we'd like to enhance and grow in.
May I? I think that really an important point, just to underscore what Sheila said, that is not here, and I'll point to 1.2 as an example. So, one of the things that I know that I've heard as some feedback is the appreciation for this is a rather tight, consolidated, and somewhat brief district plan. But what's not here yet, because there hasn't been time to develop it, is what, there's a whole other layer that is underneath, that will be, let me rephrase that, underneath each of these initiatives that will flush out and fine-tune exactly what, that's the action steps, the action planning, that time just has not permitted for us to really articulate. So, what does that mean? And I think maybe that would be captured in your question. So, tiered system of support, so certainly that can't hang out there as an endeavor unto itself. What does that mean at the elementary level? What does that mean at the middle school level? Does it mean something different in different classes? So, that next step is part of the action planning. And I'll just briefly say that Dr. Regan, Dr. Quirk at the middle school, Ms. Benishevitz and I have all been involved in working with, actually, our consultant Lori, who's working with the Department of Ed, to really start to hone our thinking around that action planning step. And that's what's coming next. And so that flushes that out.
Thank you very much. It was very helpful. I do appreciate it.
It was my pleasure.
Thank you, Dr. Brand.
Are there questions, comments from the committee?
Sort of echoing what Mrs. Burns said, you know, this is, you know, I'm a teacher, and I know trying to get all of these people together and to sort of come up with, you know, especially like the circle and the three things is incredibly, incredibly difficult. So, this, I know how much work went into this. I just really applaud, you know, your efforts on this. I think it's great. I think coming up with the terms inclusive, respectful, collaborative are all very meaningful words, and I'm really happy that that's, that was the outcome of it. So, that was awesome. Thank you.
Mr. Fennelly?
Can I just ask, and thank you all, obviously, for your work. Is it on the district's website? Is there a plan to put on the website so folks in the district can see it, or?
Absolutely. With the respect of you as a governing body, this is here. It was, this plan has been shared with, outside of the committee. I did share it with staff, because I wanted the, throughout our district, and those that served on the respective planning team. I wanted to bring it here tonight first, but it's with full intention that tomorrow this starts to roll out to the community, understanding that it still has to ultimately be approved by you. But, so not yet, but, I mean, that's part of the outreach that has to evolve in terms of getting the messaging out there in a multitude of ways, some of which were touched upon, which was a great exercise, I think, in activity in that community engagement thinking that our consultant ran through with everyone. So, now what? You're here, you have this plan. How do you get the word out and draw people's attention to it? So, thank you.
Mr. Ragsdale?
One thing I'd like to, I guess, just kind of take the committee's temperature on, because it was an issue that was, that came up a little bit in the joint meeting that we had with everyone, that in Objective Three about the inclusive, what's the language? The culture of inclusion, that we have an item in 3.4 that talks about an inclusive learning environment and culture of respect that cultivates respect for diverse ideas and viewpoints, but that that perhaps did not quite capture everything that we were trying to get at with a culture of inclusion, that there's, that it's certainly important to cultivate respect for diverse ideas and viewpoints, but we also want to have respect for diverse people, that there's an aspect of, that we're trying to capture the diversity of, you know, our state and our country and not just at the level of viewpoints. And I wanted to see if people felt that there was perhaps an opportunity to add a small amount of language there.
So, and that was something I think we were sitting in some of the similar groups, and we sort of kept going, pushing a little bit on that. I think what is, there's a couple of things that I would love to see moving forward. A good, strong definition of what we mean by inclusivity. I think we're kind of using words, but I'm not sure that everyone has the same definitions. When I think of inclusion, the first word that comes to my mind is equity and cultural proficiency. That is nowhere really in here. It's definitely inclusion as related to tiered support, special education. So, I feel like it's sort of a definition, we're working with definitions, but we may not all have the same definition. The same thing with whole child. I'd love to see that really explained. What exactly do we mean here? What are we saying in authentic ways? So, I think there's a couple of little pieces where we're really not breaking it down, but I agree, Mr. Ragsdale, that that's a piece, that there's sort of a, we're using the language, but I'm not sure that we're fully embracing what we mean by inclusion and equity and cultural proficiency. That's beyond just diverse ideas, diverse learners, but diversity as a subject. So, I agree. I don't know if there's, and we did, that did go back and forth in those meetings, and I remember at the very last meeting saying, still am not sure that this, but it could just be that it's not representing a smaller number of what people are, I'm not sure how to move forward with that, but, do you have any thought on that? It's tricky.
Yeah, I'm not, it did go back and forth, and I think, I mean, certainly, I open up to anyone else who was, who's a part of those discussions. I mean, I think the important piece here is a plan that comes to you. If there, as a committee, if there are some adjustments or tweaks that you would like to see, it certainly, I think, is very appropriate for you to do so. I will say that the plan here, after it emerged from the last review, has not, has not been tinkered with or edited with, with deliberacy, because it sort of fell outside the bounds of that collective input of the larger planning team and leadership team. That said, I would suggest it's your plan now. Obviously, with things for the leadership team to implement, but in terms of some tweaks, it's, ultimately, it's here for your approval. So, if there's something that collectively, as a governing body, you might like to see, I think that that's, I think that's totally appropriate and different than, say, myself or Dr. Regan getting together and making tweaks or edits, which we did not do, again with deliberacy. Sheila?
And I was just thinking, perhaps maybe even having a glossary at the front, not the end. Sometimes when the glossary's at the end, it's the last thing you see, and you don't realize that it would have been helpful to see those words earlier. But maybe a glossary on the second page that just has, you know, very important key words like inclusivity, and then a definition, so everyone knows what we mean in Wilmington when we're using that word in this document, or whole child, and what we mean when we're using that word, so that we're all on the same page and there's no assumptions. Just a thought.
Mr. Small?
I guess my question would be, is there that agreement yet? Is there that definition? Or is that, is that sort of, I guess my question is, you know, some of the particulars, it's sort of like the underlayer that I think Dr. Brand was speaking of, where this is sort of more of like the overview, and then there's a lot of stuff that's being built below it. So, my question would be, you know, is there a definition, or is that something that still needs to be worked on?
I love that idea, because when I think of inclusion, I think of, there's inclusion with regards to how children learn in their learning environment, but there's inclusion of each other, and diversity was something that, I think, that's what kind of tripped me up, is when I read diversity, are we talking about diversity of different cultural groups, religious groups, or learning styles? And I think having something of that sort defined as it applies to our plan and taking to Dr. Brand's point with regards, as you said, goals and action, I think that can be further defined within those, too. So, but I love that idea, especially setting off with a new strategic plan. I think that would be very helpful for the us laypeople to grasp.
Mr. Ragsdale?
I know that we were talking about possibly approving this at the next meeting, but I wonder if members of the committee would like to spend a little bit more time with the plan and consider if there are any small tweaks at the committee level that they would want to do before a second reading. I mean, some of us who, you know, who've been living with this for a long time have spent the time with that, and Mr. Fennelly, who is on the planning committee as well. But, I mean, this is something that we're going to be working with and developing, you know, already developing action steps this summer. So, we don't want to be making any changes to it later. This is supposed to guide our work for, you know, for the next three years. And so we really want to have it in a place that we're all completely happy with. So, possibly a suggestion of being able to take, you know, take some more time with this, if there are any small adjustments that could be proposed and voted on at the next meeting before approval, or perhaps with approval at the next meeting. But I want to see if other members of the committee, I mean, I've had a long time living with this through the entire process, but that's a suggestion that I'd like to put out. I don't know where other people land on that.
Thoughts on that?
I would just say, you know, we've, we'll have two weeks between now and the next meeting. Right? Is it two weeks? Yes, two weeks.
June 12.
June 12.
What day is today?
June 12.
Yeah, so it's two weeks.
Exactly, three, yeah.
I think that's, for me, I feel like that's enough time for me to digest it and offer any tweaks.
And if I may, I will say, you know, the intention is to have you approve it on June 12th. That said, right now, that is the last scheduled meeting for this year. You know, I really think that the, even absent of your approval overall, work can certainly, if there's more time that's needed, I guess, is the point, and so be it. We go into summer recess, and you're coming back in the fall to approve. I do think that that's totally fine, and certainly would be an option for you if you wish to. Work will commence on starting to build the action planning steps for the initiatives that are laid out here. So, if it's, you know, if it's something around fine-tuning some of the language or such, I think, I think that that marriage still can still work, and we can still get onto the action planning if you felt you needed more time.
And I'll just say, for, and as Mr. Ragsdale stated, and obviously, Mr. Fennelly, we all have been sitting with this for some time, it's really, for me, the strategic objective three, culture of inclusion, and a couple of those initiatives that I'm just feeling not quite, I do think that's, obviously, they're all important, but I feel as though the student learning, the social emotional learning, the learning environments are pretty, I think, in a place, and having sat on that committee, a place where everyone seemed to feel really good about it, and we seemed to think that this was actually, really, we identified with it. We knew this was who we were as a district. This culture of inclusion, I still feel, is that we might need a little bit more work in just, because I think we're throwing words around, again, embraces, here's what we say, promote an inclusive collaborative school and community culture that embraces diversity to enhance learning for all students. And then I look at our initiatives, and so, actually, maybe it's not that statement I think is strong, it's the initiatives that follow that I'm sort of like, is that really doing what we say we're doing? And I worry if we don't firm it now, that we start doing the action planning, and that part is going to be more difficult to enact, because it seems a little bit that those initiatives aren't really, is really not supporting that objective in the way that they need to be. Mrs. Burns?
Just a point of order. So, going, just so that I have clarification of the expectation in June 12th. Is it the school board bringing forth possible changes? Or is it, I don't, because I sort of don't feel comfortable not being engaged in that long process. Or is it those board members who participated with the strategic plan along with, I don't know, to come up with language? Or, I like the glossary idea, too. I think that was great, because it's so, words can mean so many different things depending upon how they're applied. I just don't know what, because I don't, I know what I'd like to see, but I don't want, you know, I don't feel comfortable being the author of, this is how I, this is, these are the words I want, would like to have clarified as part of it. So, for clarification, I'm just trying to get an idea as to what the expectation going forth between now and June 12th is, with the board or with members of the, you know?
I think the idea would be that this is now to us, so it's now something we need to make sure we feel comfortable with. That being said, I also agree that I wouldn't feel comfortable making changes when a committee of 60 people worked so diligently on this and then say, oh, we're gonna just, so I don't think it's ma, one, I don't think it's major changes, and maybe it is just some wording, but I'm wondering if, does it make sense to have, to have the administration and the leadership define some of those terms? Or just maybe they look at that section and just sort of see if there's some things they want to bring back to us on the 12th? And then, at the same time, we can bring ideas for, but I agree that I think it could get messy if we start all bringing in word, and I want to change this, or I want to add this, and that's not really in the spirit of what we spent all that time, all that time doing. So, I mean, do you, does that seem workable to meet with the?
So, yes, just.
Not the big community team, but the smaller team?
And specifically, the recommendation to, or the request to look at, just the one, are you talking about just the one area, culture of inclusion?
So, the only thing I've heard anyone mention has been related to strategic objective three, culture of inclusion. Is there anything else that anyone else had to? So, maybe just that one, maybe to, I don't know, fine-tune it or provide some definitions possibly before our next meeting? And then we'll have a chance to look at it through the packet, and then we can still possibly vote on the 12th. I'm worried about pushing it off too far and then not being able to start the work. Do you agree? Mr. Ragsdale?
Yeah, no, I would very, very much prefer approving the plan at the end of, the beginning of the summer and not pushing any, pushing any of that off further on. Perhaps, because I also don't want to see, like, at the next meeting, that we're just going around and like, well, here are my ideas, and however it is, and then suddenly we're collectively wordsmithing in the school committee meeting, which is not a good idea. I think that maybe that any ideas that we do have individually can be sent, that we can pass them along to Dr. Brand and to you, and therefore, they can be already incorporated and played around, and his team can also work with those and, you know, present that to us at the next meeting. Because I would very much like to approve this plan on June 12th.
Okay. Is everyone okay with that? All right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks again, everybody.
Thank you very much. Ari? 7B, that's you?
7B. There is in your packet, 7B is the collaborative that we belong to, SEEM, the FY20 budget. This is informational, not seeking any action from you this evening, but as a member of the SEEM collaborative, all respective districts are receiving the FY20 budget information. Thank you. And so, I'm happy to try my best to answer any questions, should you have any. Again, this is just informational only, no actions needed on this tonight.
Any questions, comments? You're good?
Great.
Elementary science program recommendation. Dr. Regan, is that you?
I do, yeah. I don't know. Do I just fast-forward Tristan to the?
Good evening. Thank you. So, before I turn it over to my colleagues here, I just want to, their names will come up later, but I want to really start by thanking our team of teachers that worked on this pilot, going all the way back to the winter in November. One of those teachers is to my left, it's Amy Iascony, who also serves as our K-5 science lead teacher. Bob Moriello from the Shawshine is also here. Kristin Russo is here as well from the West. So, I want to thank them for being here. We'll show their names up, but they really were at the they really were at the heart of this entire process and it took quite a lot of work on their behalf and I appreciate their efforts, we all do. And also, you have in front of you just samples from the program, which is Elevate by Pearson, student workbooks and then some pamphlets, just so you can have a sense if you want to flip through those. So.
Okay. So, I'll start off, and a brief history of science in Wilmington. We have no adopted science program in K-5 for at least 15 years. Elementary teachers have been and are currently using a variety of materials to teach science. Wilmington adopted a Pearson Science product for grades six through eight in 2017, which is aligned with the next generation science standards and the Massachusetts frameworks, which are aligned to the next generation science standards. The high school course, science courses are NGSS and mass frameworks aligned. The science MCAS in grades five, eight, and 10 are now NGSS aligned with the Massachusetts frameworks, but currently, our elementary science program is not. So, why adopt an elementary science program? To excite our youngest students about science, because who doesn't want to be excited about science? Ultimately, increase enrollment in rigorous STEM courses at the high school, increase the number of Wilmington high school graduates who pursue STEM fields post-high school, alignment with NGSS, and improve MCAS performance in science.
So, as Brian stated earlier, the pilot started way back when, in two years, two years ago. But we did pilot two elementary programs, Pearson Elevate Science and also STEM Scopes. We did pilot it in grades three through five. We had two teachers, one teacher per grade. The North, the Woburn Street in the North did STEM Scopes, three, four, and five. Shawshene in West did Pearson Elevated. So, we split the district in half, doing the two. The teachers met, had different times to meet with each other. They also had different times to meet with the vendors in training. And then, we are here today, currently making a recommendation of what the pilot teachers chose to do. Pearson, and why we chose to do Pearson and STEM Scopes, one of them was that Pearson Science is used currently at the Wilmington Middle School. Also, it is the same online platform that we currently use in Invision's math, K through eight. It obviously is fully aligned. It is a hybrid, so it has the workbook that you have a sample of right in front of you, but it also has the digital piece. And Pearson, we've had a great relationship with Pearson through multiple years. Also has connections with hands-on and also connections to learning-based. STEM Scopes, we chose that as, excuse me, it was 100% digital approach. It was a very non-traditional approach. It provided teachers with flexibility to teach relative. It also was fully aligned. There was online PD and support that we received. There was hands-on inquiry-based learning and also connections to that. And also, prior to September last spring, we also did contact Amplify and also Discovery Ed. So, those were two other vendors that we did also have thoughts in and also consider during this pilot team. The team of teachers, as we've just mentioned before, Bob Moriello, grade three at Shawshene is here, Kristin Russo at the West, and Trish Moulton, grade five at the West. So, those teachers were doing the Pearson Elevate. Amy Iascony, also being our science lead teacher, had the opportunity to also come for both trainings. So, she was involved as myself and Brian was, were in training and both training. And also, the teachers also got to go and visit and see the other classrooms as I covered classrooms. That was an experience teaching fifth grade, as I taught kindergarten for many years. The STEM Scope teachers was Annette Owen from grade three at Woburn Street, Robyn Dury, fourth grade at the North, and Amy Iascony at the fifth grade. And they piloted the STEM Scopes program. The timeline, as you can see here on the chart, Pearson, we gave a just training in December and also a training in February. STEM Scopes was a little late to the delivery. They had a little personnel issues, but once we did get a trainer, it was very effective and they were very supportive. We did an in-house training. We had a rep and then we also went to another training. That actually was great because Bob Moriello got to attend that training with us. So, he got to experience STEM Scopes from the vendor's point of view also. The teachers fully implemented the program to their best of their ability. STEM Scopes gave us one to two bands where Pearson Elevate to give us access to the whole entire program. So, our three, four, and five teachers are still currently using it. They gave us all of the materials they needed for the full year of science. So, they were able to have a good feel for it. We had multiple meetings throughout the year. I really will say, the staff who piloted this team was really dedicated to give it their best all and really gave us great feedback about which one they would recommend for Wilmington to purchase for our students. They put in timeless on their own hours in preparing lessons and preparing lab experiments, which is a big change from what we're doing now. Their, both programs do have a lot of labs that they will get to experience with the students. And the students, I went to go visit many classrooms, and the students really enjoyed the hands-on piece, which was very exciting to see with both of the programs.
I think we noticed the pilot progress meetings, I just make mention there, those were very important. We ran three of those together as a full group and in one of those, we distributed a rubric that was created and all six teachers completed this rubric, which focused on the seven areas that you see listed above, the content itself, the design, the kind of materials and resources, what types of assessments come with the programs. There was a whole element on sort of equity in terms of diversity of learners and how the program can be modified and how easily it can be modified for students that need that modification. Of course, standards alignment, which both programs are fully aligned, and then just learning activities. So, we took that, you know, it's a rubric with a scoring system. So, yes, there were numeric scores assigned, but it was more or less the comments and the conversations that we had during our pilot, joint pilot meetings, I think, that helped us make this final decision based on the feedback of the pilot teachers.
And obviously, as you can see the materials, we did choose and would like to recommend Pearson Elevate for the K through five program. It, the ratings through the rubric that we used were very high. The teachers that used the program thoroughly enjoyed it. One of the great resources is the platform for the teachers. It's going to be a very easy transition. The platform is the same as Pearson, our math program, which is Invision 2.0, it's on the exact same platform. So, it's going to be an easier transition for the teachers. That digital piece in that platform is going to be an easy transition for our teachers. The teachers liked the resources and the teacher's guide. That was a very big, strong component about Pearson, was the teachers had an actual teacher guide. STEM Scopes did not. STEM Scopes was a pure digital piece and the teachers were still a little bit uneasy about that. Pearson does have grade level, is grade level appropriate? We had multiple teachers look at the different grades. I even brought some samples down to lower grades for them to look at it. The labs are very open-ended, promoting higher-order thinking. The activities all had real-world activities within them, which was really exciting. All of them highlighted real scientists throughout the literature. And as you can see, if you're flipping through the book, you'll notice that too. And also, for the students to transition to using Elevate Science will also be an easier transition. It's right next to their math. So, the transition for the students to understand and how to use the Pearson Science, Elevate Science, will be very similar to how they use their math program. And the students in the Shawshene and the West were very easy transitioned in using it currently as they were the pilot classrooms. They thoroughly enjoyed using that transition.
I didn't note up there, but Pearson, it's got connections like STEM Scopes does to literacy, but they actually have leveled readers that you can purchase. We don't have that budget for next year, but it gives us an idea that, you know, as teachers are building their libraries, we have a whole list of books that we can choose from that would directly tie into the program itself, some nonfiction.
So, one of the things with, the concepts, I guess, with any science program that are aligned with the NGSS standards are the five Es. And what those represent are engage, explore, explain, elaborate, and evaluate. And the new standards call for a new way to learn, a new way to learn science. I think it's a way that's sort of unfamiliar to a lot of us as teachers and a lot of our students. And what Pearson does is it incorporates these five Es. And Pearson Elevate Science encourages students to become more self-directed, curious, and accountable. Because this program is based on the five E learning cycle, this new instructional model is a blend of both print and digital learning, which creates a student-centered experience. Students will learn to synthesize ideas, use evidence, and apply new understanding and transfer that knowledge to new situations. And I think that's the key component in this program, that it allows students to apply and transfer that knowledge to new situations. And that's what the pilot teachers really liked best about it, that it, it's not just a regurgitation of information, it's not just memorizing facts about science, it's actually taking it and applying it to the real world.
Just in terms of next steps, after tonight's presentation, I would notify the entire K5 teaching staff tomorrow in a message with some of this information, but just in general, the decision. We have already been speaking with Pearson about them giving us access in June for teachers. They wouldn't be required to do that, but that would give them the option if they wanted to access the platform anytime in the next couple of weeks through the summer. After July 1, when the fiscal year turns, we would use the budget that the committee approved earlier this year to order the materials. And over the summer, we would be in the science closets doing some organization. We have a lot of old materials in there. We have to move aside, you know, prepare for the new kits that would come. And then, we would use the September CIT day for a K5 training with Pearson. They're already on the books to do that. And, you know, again, because of the similarity to the math platform, we don't see that this is going to be an enormous lift in terms of learning the way the system works. But because of that, we actually wouldn't be expecting teachers to implement this in September. They would start after that training. So, the first four weeks or three and a half weeks of school, they wouldn't be doing science necessarily. So, it would be an October rollout officially.
And we also may ask Pearson that we may have the teacher's editions here in the buildings before the teachers leave in June, if not early July, that they maybe have that access. Again, not requiring the teachers to, but if they want to have access to their teacher additions to kind of take a look at it during their time over the summer.
That's our presentation.
Thank you very much. Questions, comments from the board? Mrs. Burns?
Thank you. I can see why, it makes most sense, especially this aligns into the middle school science program. I know for a fact, the length of time that the schools have been doing without a curriculum, because of the change and the standards were going to change, so they weren't going to invest. I just had a couple of really quick questions. I love it, I love it. I, just curious budgetarily, how much does this cost? And what is the estimated cost of the consumables going forth? Just to get an idea as to how-
You know, I think we budgeted $50,000 in the FY20 budget.
Right.
I'm not sure consumables-
Yeah, the consumable piece is interesting. The vendor themselves, they have packets that you can buy every year just to replenish your kits. They actually told us not to buy it from them.
Is it with workbooks too?
The workbooks, yes.
Those we'd have to purchase every year.
And they suggested, they're going to give us actually a materials list and they suggested that the district go to a local, either Amazon or you try and do something through a Walmart.
For the lab materials.
For the lab material, because you could replenish them much less.
After the first, this year.
Because I remember when they were giving us breaks on the startup of it all and then kicks it in. Does this program also, outside of the consumables, does it have a yearly fee to it?
So, what we budgeted for was a multi-year subscription.
Okay.
So, yes, to the online platform. You would need to buy the notebook set, the workbooks every year, which are fairly normal cost. But with that comes the access to the online-
Okay.
The digital-
Just to get an idea of what, just, you know, just a familiarity. With the, the other curriculum programs that you have looked at, besides, I mean, I think that one of the key pieces is the alignment to this, and again, the smooth transition into the middle school curriculum. What was it about those programs, whether it be financially or the elements they offered, that, I mean, what was the primary, typically, we, in the past, when new curriculum requests have been presented, get a little idea, so these are the, these are the curriculums we look like, we look at, that this is why we're going with this one. This one didn't have this, well, you know, and this is what we'd like to pilot. And so, I was just curious, what elements that you view, because I don't, I have no idea. I know this is kind of, this curriculum is all developing fairly new stuff. Does this give us more flexibility as, I assume the standards will change too, you know, as we go on? Does it give us a lot of flexibility as if, if the standards do change and are enhanced?
Well, I think Pearson also, being the company that it is, even with the math standards changing, they were able to enhance and change their program.
They probably have.
Right. And they update their program. So, I think within both programs, they were going to go and move, where the science just got updated right now, that it is completely Massachusetts-aligned.
So, this offers us more flexibility than the other ones that you had reviewed?
Both of them pretty much were, gave us a same, similar flexibility. The only thing with STEM Scopes was, I probably, if I can speak to both, actually, both you guys were the Pearson group, was the STEM Scopes truly being 100% digital. That was a very, very big challenge for the teachers.
Gotcha.
There was no workbooks, there was no teacher's guide. It was all on the computer.
So, the teacher would have to do a lot more, yeah, based-
There was no, like, you could, you know, look at the teacher, look at the book. That was probably their, their biggest drawback. And we also thought, with all of the initiatives that are going forward with the teachers, with reader's workshop, writer's workshop, da-da-da-da-da-da-da-da, to put on another brand-new program on them, like STEM Scopes, which would be 100% digital, we wanted to also alleviate a little bit of that stress. And knowing that Elevate is very similar to the math, even though it's science, but the platform is all the same on how they're going to access it, that training piece is going to be taken out for the teachers and hopefully make a little easier transition for them.
I think the hands-on learning piece is essential, especially in that age gap.
Both programs had the same, both programs had the same, similar pieces to the labs.
Okay.
Yeah.
Very good. Thank you very much for the clarification.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Ragsdale?
So, the presentation said that the STEM Scopes program was a non-traditional approach. Could you elaborate a little bit on what, what that was?
Maybe.
Yeah. So, when you think of like a traditional curriculum, it comes with student workbooks, it comes with a teacher book, it comes with sometimes a volume one, volume two of a teacher edition. STEM Scopes didn't have any teacher, printed teacher material. So, basically, the program was fully digital and you could purchase, well, it was fully digital, but you could purchase a student, what we would call like a science book. What they called it was a STEM Scopedia. And it was basically like the science content. So, you purchase that, that was separate. However, we termed it non-traditional because you, it was fully digital for the teacher. And I don't think that all teachers would be 100% comfortable with that. And I think that, you know, you kind of hit the nail on the head before when you were saying, or we were talking about, we want to make sure that the program is not only aligned with the new standards, but that it's a smooth transition for our teachers at the elementary level. And out of those two programs, because Pearson Elevate is more traditional, it's got the teacher's workbook, it has a platform that we're familiar with, that not only met the standards, but it also made a much smoother transition for our students. Because in my opinion, really, no matter what program you go with, if you don't choose one that you feel your teachers are comfortable with and will be effective in teaching, it really doesn't matter what you go with. And so, that's why when looking at those two programs, we kind of termed STEM Scopes more the non-traditional program versus the traditional program, which has the textbooks and the teacher's books and the more familiar platform.
Thanks. And I think they agree that the platform familiarity is not to be, you know, overlooked, that, I mean, that's a, that's a big deal. I mean, you know, we have, you know, one, one computer system for MCAS and a different one for access for ELLs and then, you know, it's like-
Yeah.
Different platforms and stuff, you know, add a lot of load to, to learn them all. One other thing I want to ask about is that the, you said that the teachers had an opportunity to observe each other, teaching the programs. Was that cross-program, so that like Mr. Moriello could- Was that cross-program, so that like Mr. Mariello could watch Ms. Ellen teaching the STEM Scopes and vice versa, so they could each see the other?
Yeah, it was very interesting, and I think, you know, the teachers had a great time doing it. And then, you know, like I said, Mr. Mariello got to go to a STEM Scope training off-site one day just to even see another piece of, you know, another piece of it. So they really got a taste of both programs. And I just ran around and covered everybody's classroom. It was a lot of fun.
Because I think that's very important, that, you know, I just taught this standard, and now let's see the same lesson from the other side.
Yep, and they, they had, we had some great communication, the teachers had a great dialogue when we met in all the meetings about all the programs and different things, so they really had a good handle of it.
I think one of the other pieces around the online platform, I should say that the student and the content piece, they're very similar in quality. So making the decision based on sort of a teacher comfort or teacher fit, if we had a program that was inferior, then you would obviously take it from the student perspective first, but because they both were very similar quality in that area, that was sort of a non-issue. But not being one-to-one below the middle school played into that digital concern, right? So we've got Chromebooks, but we don't have enough of them to get them into classrooms as much as you might need to if you're using a software like STEM Scopes. And that made it even more challenging for teachers to try and make this 100% digital program work in a school that doesn't have kids with their own devices in front of them. There was a, it just started to feel like that was going to be a huge mountain to climb to make that square peg fit in a round hole.
Mr. Smaha?
Yeah, you said that the, there's a connection to literacy in it, where there's a connection to leveled readers. Is it just leveled readers, or do they make connections to other sort of, you know, like real literature?
No, they make connections to the different skills and strategies that the kids are learning during reading, for example, main idea. So in one of the lessons, and, I mean, I didn't teach the Pearson, but I do know in our meetings that we had, when we talked about that, in both programs, they did do that, but that was one of the things that the pilot teachers of Pearson spoke very highly about, is the connections to literacy. So in fact, I think it was Trish Moulton said that in her science lesson, as she was beginning her science lesson, and the science lesson incorporated main idea, the kid said, "Oh, we just did this today in ELA class." And she was just kind of blown away by that, that the fact that the kids brought that up on their own. So those are the kinds of connections that every lesson in Pearson has, which is great.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time and the energy piloting the programs. I think it helps us to make such, helps you to make such an informed decision, so we really appreciate that. Thank you. I think there's some guests who are very excited that we are now approaching the Wilmington High School Senior Exploration Program, so. Ms. Peters, will you join us? Thank you.
Welcome.
I have some folders that I'm just going to pass out that will give you a little bit more information that's updated about the program since we actually are starting our project presentations tomorrow. So, and you're welcome to come. We have many appointments with our students tomorrow, Friday, and then Tuesday and Wednesday. And Wednesday, we also have our senior internship exposition. We have about 100 students that will come and present with their supervisors. Hopefully, they are invited and their parents are invited as well to come and present their experience with their internships. I do have some people here tonight that could speak to their experience. I'll have them come up first before I go through the program, but Ben Packer is going to talk about his internship.
Hello, everyone. So for the senior internship, well, exploration program, I chose the internship option. And my decision to do the internship was really brought up in the beginning of the summer because in the summertime, excuse me, in the summertime, I got a lot of experience working in a hospital, working on, with inpatient care at Mass General Hospital. And I knew that from my internship with the school, I really wanted to do something more outpatient and more like in a clinic. So I actually got an internship locally with Dr. Sullivan. And I've been working, like answering the phones, faxing information, filling out prescriptions, filing prescriptions, filing patients' charts. And I really think this internship program that the high school has brought to us is really an amazing opportunity for kids to really go into the field that they're really interested in. Like myself, I'm very interested in medicine, and I really want to pursue to become a doctor, more specifically, an oncologist. And this program just really allowed me to explore and see what it's like to work in outpatient care rather than the inpatient experience I got in the summer.
I would like you to know that Ben also has three AP classes and a performance class, so he has to come to school every other day as well.
So like, with those AP classes, in the beginning of the year, I knew that I wanted to do something, you know, that was very like rigorous, the internship, the internship in the medical field, I knew was going to take a lot of my time. And I did after-school activities, and I was going to, of course, take rigorous academic classes. So I talked to my guidance counselor throughout the beginning of the year to make sure that I had at least one day off during the time between AP testing and, like, the time that AP classes and the internship overlapped. I made sure that I still had, you know, at least every other day that I could go to the internship from eight to two and be able to work the internship.
Sorry, questions? I'm just writing everything down. Questions, comments? Mrs. Burns?
It's not surprising to me that you picked the oncology field. I work in internal medicine at MGH as well, and we have students, we've had students come to our practice and shadow one of our physician. It, to, we don't, what they do is they pretty much shadow, they see how we operate the different elements of a, oncology is a little different than internal medicine for the sake that we see a global of different illnesses, which become challenging. But every component of a medical office, I'm not sure if you, it might be too early, if you were planning for inpatient or outpatient care, but there's so many different facets that go into providing good medical care and patient service that, that's something I can also look into if any student.
That would be awesome.
I have to talk to my director, but I think that's very admirable, and I'm so impressed with, there's not enough time in the day in my life, I can't imagine AP classes internship and, I think you run track?
Yeah.
Running, so that's fantastic to hear.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments, questions? Thank you. Do you have any, are you staying up here? Are we?
No, I do have three gentlemen that would like to speak about their project. They chose a project over an internship. We, this is the first year we've decided to do 100% participation in the program. So we did change it from internship to exploration so that we can include project work as well. We know that some students don't always feel comfortable going out and doing something in the community or in a different business, they don't have the opportunity. So they decided to do a project. Many of them are pursuing projects from the talent that they have, just from interest that they have. So these are three gentlemen from a group of seven, are there seven of you? I call them the pergola boys, but I will let them tell you what they've been doing for the last month. So I have Ryan, Sean, and Sam.
So we're three out of the seven on our, our project option. We chose to build a pergola in the school courtyard, so we've been working on that. And, you know, so we have the four weeks for our project, and we never realized how much really goes into it. It was a lot more than just, you know, buying some wood and slapping it together. You know, there's a lot of planning, you know, a lot of designing and budgeting and a whole bunch of stuff that goes into it that we didn't account for. So time management was one of the biggest things we really took away from this. You know, we started working on this probably two, two, three months before. You know, we had a lot of meetings, we met with people from the town, we had to go to town hall, fill out a building permit, so that was something that we didn't really account for. You know, we, we had to do a schedule because a couple of our members have APs that they had to go to almost every day. You know, there's only, I think, two or three periods out of the week that we were all working on at the same time, just because of the AP classes. So accounting for that, you know, figuring out, well, who can do this and who can do that at this time, you know, really, it shows you how big these projects can be. You know, there's a couple of reasons why we wanted to do it. Number one is really to beautify the courtyard. We feel that, you know, they can do so much with the courtyard, there's a lot of space, a lot of opportunities that you can, you know, put something and leave a mark on the, you know, in the, in the high school, that, you know, we spent four years here, 12 years in the school system, why not leave something behind? We also, we really just want to set the bar high. This is the first year that it's 100% participation between all, like, all of our seniors are doing it. So by setting the bar up there, you know, there's something that they can go out and they can just look at, and they see, you know, how hard we worked. They see us out there every day, you know, working on something, there's always something that can be done, we're always here. So, you know, that's something that they can always, they can look back on, they can say, well, they did this, I want to do something better than that, you know, why are they, and why are they going 100%? Why would I not? A lot of people have showed their support for our project. You know, we hear a lot from a lot of the faculty members here, which is really nice. When you're walking down the hall and, you know, they're all asking about it and saying it looks great, and how it's coming together, and how we're really working as a team, you know, it just, it feels awesome to have that. You know, we, we learned a lot about budgeting, pricing, all that stuff out. A reason why we picked a pergola was just because, you know, besides beautifying the courtyard, it also has a function. You know, in the summer, the life skills classes are here, and the high school's where they're out of. So when they go out to the courtyard, because when you're in the summer, you know, you want to enjoy the nice weather, so the courtyard's a great place, but it gets hot, you know, 80-degree days, so a little bit of shade wouldn't hurt. We also, we have a binder with all of our information, and we actually have two if anyone wants to take a look at them. We have all of our, yep. So in there, we have all of our quotes, we got our wood from Wilmington Builders, so we got it locally. We have all of our, our first designs, we wanted to, you know, he was the one who catted it up in our engineering class. And our engineering teacher is actually one of our two advisors on the project. So he works, you know, he's giving up a lot of his free time and, you know, a lot of his energy to help us out. We didn't really know much about construction, so having him out there, you know, it's a big help. He showed us a lot about a lot of the foundations that we had to set and, you know, what to look for, what, you know, what we need to do. So the construction part was, it was huge help. And then, you know, we had a building, filling out the building permit, we realized how much goes into, we had a couple of signatures from town hall, so figuring out where to go and all that, you know, what needs to get done, what they're looking for. We needed to tell them what we're doing and how we're setting it up and how we're going about it, who's supervising it, all that. All that goes into one piece of paper, you know, that's a lot to figure out, especially when you're trying to make it a day trip. Besides that, you know, giving back to the community is a huge part, because, like I said, that's going to be out there for, we're hoping, a very long time. So having that to really look forward to and, you know, being able to, especially on graduation, that's coming up in a week and a half, so when we're here for graduation, I'm, I know, me personally, I'm taking my family out there just to show them what I did and where I've been the past four weeks. You know, it's just a big project. We, we took a lot out of it. It's, I like the project option better than the internship. You know, I like, I'm a hands-on learner, I don't know about the rest of them, but I like doing things with my hands. So being able to go out there and really, you know, build something yourself and get that, like, experience, it's something, you know, it's something special.
I think they learned how to work together very well.
Yeah. Teamwork was a big part of it. Everyone has a role in. Yeah. Holding ladders. Safety's important. Safety first, yeah. Two-man ladder jobs. Of course.
So hopefully, if you have a chance, maybe not tonight, but you will see the pergola, it's almost, almost ready.
Say, is it finished? Just about?
Tomorrow, just about. We'll have that all done, and then just making it look nice and pretty around it, and getting some plants, hopefully.
That's great. Thank, thank you. I'll open it up for questions, but thank you so much. And Ben, can you just come sit back here, just in case we have questions about, now that I understand, one was internship, one was project, so there might be some questions from the committee about the, not, I think we understand the differences, but I would just, I would love to know, and then I'll open it up. What?
I'm sorry.
You cut me alive.
I was.
I let everyone else go first every single time.
I'm just, I have heard your question, I just thought, I was just wondering if during construction, there were any injuries that you had to attend to?
So I think the sunburn was the worst. Yeah, surprisingly, no. Surprisingly, not.
Everyone was safe.
Yeah, everyone was safe.
Well, Ben's over here, so you can banish you out now that it's inside in a.
My question is, so doing this work, has it changed the way you think about where you're headed next? Did you say, oh, I hadn't thought about this before? And I guess that would go to either the internship or the project.
Definitely for me, because, I mean, the experience that I got with my internship really helped me choose where I really wanted to go, the specific pathway that I really wanted to move on to.
That's great. That's interesting.
I mean, doing the construction, you know, that was, the way I saw it when we first started it, we thought it was just going to be more of a construction job than anything, but you see, there's a lot of business aspects that go into it. And I see myself in the future being in business. So for that, for me especially, was, you know, it was huge seeing all the paperwork and all the, the things that go into it, the little things that matter, like the budgeting and, you know, finding out, you know, where it's coming from, how you're going to do it, how to get the results quick, but also, you know, efficient.
Mr. Rexton?
You had to go get the building permit at town hall. How confident are you that this is going to pass inspection? When the building inspector comes, confident?
100%.
One thing that I think from hearing, hearing you talk about doing this project, that I think is probably a really valuable thing to learn, is that things that seem simple and straightforward have a lot of underlying complexity and details to them once you actually dive into them. And that's something that I think you will in fact find applies much more broadly, that things, things that from the outside look like, oh, that must be easier, you know, you think you know how it works, that diving into the details and finding out how it really works, that they're, they all have a lot of additional complexity and a lot of things to learn from them.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments from the board? That was excellent. Thank you so much for sharing. I don't know, this was really excellent and so great, I think, for us to hear from you. We can read all about it, but it's so great for us to hear, right, from you about what this meant to you and what you've learned from it and how it may make you think a little bit differently about your futures and where you see yourselves in five, 10, 15, or more years. So thank you. Ms. Peters, do you have anything else to share about this project?
It was a great experience for me. I met with every senior before we, before they actually decided what they wanted to do. We talked through a lot of things, which really helped me to get to know everyone a little bit better. I learned a lot about how I can improve next year, and I'm looking forward to the presentations just to see, you know, exactly how they felt about doing it. I know it wasn't received 100%, I want to do this, this is great. I know there was a little hesitation, but they were all very cooperative and they all managed to find something, and they're all doing something. So I'm pretty anxious to see what they've done.
So I do have one more question. That's a very impactful project. What are, what's the scope of some of the other projects? What types of things were?
Um, well, there's a, there's a lot of internships, but the projects are a lot of group, uh, projects. There are podcasts that we'll be seeing. There's a group of young ladies who are doing a cookbook. Um, there are two young ladies that are writing, um, a children's book in Italian. So, they're, they're, they're just doing something that they've always wanted to do, that they haven't had the opportunity to. I have a, a student that's a math-science guy who likes to write and he's writing a novella. So, I think there's a lot of different things that students have not been able to do in the four years that they've been here that they have an interest in, so they're, they're just going to try it. So, you know, I, I just let them do whatever they felt that they wanted to do at this time. So...
And the presentations are, so we, I see this, the expo, and, but there are presentations starting tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
And we're invited?
Well, I'm just checking. You're welcome to come. We have our, a panel of three teachers that will be, um, viewing the presentations and evaluating the student projects, throughout the day. There's, they're fifteen-minute presentations. So...
And that's, and then the expo is something different?
That's from nine to twelve on the twenty-ninth, and they'll all be in the gym.
So, that's like the overview of everything?
And then everyone can just walk around and...
Excellent.
And they can present.
Excellent. Thank you. Mr. Rex.
One thing that was really clear, um, just reading through the description of the, the whole process, is how, just how much individual one-on-one attention all of these students are receiving from, from you and your assistant principals and the guidance counselors. And I think that's a real hallmark, hallmark of the way that this is being done, that it's really, you know, boring down at the individual level, that they're getting that, you know, that, you know, sign-off time and face time, that they're really exploring what they want to do and that it's, uh, you know, a big investment of, uh, you know, in them from, on an individual level, from, uh, from the administration and from teachers and guidance counselors and so forth.
There's many teachers that are supervising some of the projects, which is really great. So...
And I think that's terrific.
Thanks so much. Can I give, sorry, can I give a round of applause?
Thank you, uh, gentlemen, for coming. And, uh, Ms. Peters, again, thank you for all of your leadership around, uh, this endeavor. I, uh, have a small window in terms of the amount of time that Ms. Peters and her team have spent on this. And thank you, Mr. Ragsdale, for acknowledging that. Um, it, uh, it is, it's impactful and this is just a, the intention of this tonight was just to provide a brief glimpse into some of the, uh, work that some of the students have been doing with this. But again, Ms. Peters, thank you for all of your work.
And that don't go anywhere because it's your turn. We have the first reading, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty Wilmington High School Student Handbook.
So, there were not a lot of, um, changes, um, but there were some major changes. Um, the bullying prevention and intervention plan was updated. I have to thank Dr. Regan for helping me with that. Um, kind of going through what we had and comparing it to the plan that was developed this year so that our plan, our, our policy in the handbook matched it. Um, we changed the community service deadlines just for, um, just to get students, um, better prepared to have their community service before the last quarter of the school year. And if, if it was impossible that we could help them during that last quarter, um, get those hours that they need. So, we did change just the, the deadlines for that. So, the seniors would be, um, submitting their forms on the first Friday in April and the underclassmen on the last Friday in April. We had a statement in the handbook, uh, in the discipline section about due process for suspensions. And there wasn't any, um, statement regarding due process for all disciplinary investigations, so I did include that, um, so that it was understood that we do have a due process for everything. Uh, the next four, from four, five, six, and seven, they're really the vaping policy that was presented at the last school committee meeting. It was in four sections, so I sectioned it, uh, in four sections in the handbook. Um, it is, um, pretty much word for word, based on the memo that you received and the policy that was presented to you at the last meeting that, uh, I adjusted in, in the handbook or actually included in, in the handbook. Um, the last, um, change that was made was regarding an appeals process for academic eligibility. Uh, we have a pretty stringent academic eligibility policy, um, and we do abide by it. Um, but I feel that we do need to look at case by case for some students, so we have included an appeals process. Uh, before a student is allowed to appeal, uh, his academic eligibility status, uh, we will have, uh, at the mid-quarter, we will have, um, notification to those students and their parents if they are in danger of possibly not being eligible by the end of the quarter. And at that time, we will form a, a group, a team, to work with the student and come up with a success plan, so that they're working towards not, um, getting to that place where they're not eligible at the end of the quarter to participate in athletics, in extracurricular, um, and in, in other, in other things, other events and activities. So, we will put that in place and then if it, we will go through an appeals process if the student would like to appeal, um, his academic eligibility at the end of the quarter. Again, this, this will involve a process which involves a meeting. Um, but we do have that, they must have, um, met all of the provisions that were made in the success plan that we have provided at mid-quarter. Um, we do have MIAA, MIAA eligibility requirements that we will not, um, be able to appeal. Those are, uh, those are all the changes that we have.
Thank you. Questions, comments from the board? Mr. Smaha?
I had a question, um, on three about the, um, and maybe I'm just not understanding it, but, um, the, the due process would be exercised on all disciplinary investigations. Is it, this, this due process that's, that's titled in here is just for suspensions or that includes everything? Or, I'm a little confused.
The due process statement includes only suspensions, so rather than change that statement, I just added the statement that due process is exercised for all disciplinary investigations, because some of those disciplinary investigations do not involve suspension.
Okay.
Mr. Rex.
Let's have a small comment on page forty-eight, um, which is discussing graduation requirements. Uh, the MCAS language hasn't been updated for the new scoring scale. I'm still using the old...
Thank you.
The old scale.
Anybody else? Good? And this is just the first read, so there's nothing to do.
No.
No action to take.
It would be at the June twelfth meeting in which we'd look for your approval.
Thank you, as always, for putting this together. It's always, you're well organized and it's great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Are we still in new business? What? Our final item under new business is the school committee subcommittee reorganization. And so, basically, we talked about this last time and I'll just go through them, I think, and see. And if you're interested, you'll sort of just let us know and we'll, we'll put it in there. And then next time, this will be updated and you'll hear after that about which meetings are, are upcoming. Okay? Policy Subcommittee. So, right now, that is Steve, David, that's me, and MJ is an alternate. Anybody want to change or take it? I'm happy to stay on that, but if someone else...
I'm willing to continue unless anybody...
Be interested in staying since we haven't yet actually met.
And I'd be willing to be the alter, the alternate, so...
Okay, perfect. I'll see. Are we okay with that on this side of the table? Okay.
Yes. But just wait, let's go.
Give us a chance to fail first.
It is, it's in the works. We're moving right along.
It's in the works.
You'll be sorry. Sick Bank Subcommittee, right now, that is Steve York and Joe Newhouse. Stay, go? Anyone just want to get in there?
I'm fine with sticking.
I'm fine with staying.
Okay, all right. Well, someone might really have a, a desire to be in the Sick Bank Subcommittee. The super...
That'd be one sick person.
The Superintendent Evaluation Subcommittee. Here, we will need to change something. Um, Julie Broussard is listed on here, so she is no longer the chair or with the school committee. So, we have Jim Brason, Joe Newhouse. We will need one more member. I'm hap, I'm happy to stay and I think I need to stay. Is that right?
Yes.
Yes. And then, so Joe, and then one more person interested in serving on that committee. Mr. Smaha, anyone want to argue with him for that spot? I've never done this before, like, anything like this in my entire lifetime, actually. We have a school committee representative to the WEF Board of Directors. Right now, that is David Ragsdale.
I'd be happy for someone to take that if they're willing to.
Would someone like to take that? You can read the description below and the time commitment. Looks like it's the second Tuesday of every month.
Can I work?
Yeah?
Yeah.
Great, thank you. School Committee Representative to the Wellness Advisory Committee, MJ Burns.
I have no problem continuing, but I, I would open it up to anybody who has interest, because I have to say, it's, it's a, one of the best subcommittees I've sat on. It's really quite engaging. So, if there's any interest. And the dates for next year are already, um, on the calendar. They meet four times. Um, it'll be Tuesday at three, for anyone who may be inclined to want to jump in.
The timing's, yeah, okay. Going once, going twice. Oh, MJ, thank you. Um, School Committee Representative to CPAC. So, David Ragsdale is the representative right now and I am the alternate.
I'm happy to continue with that.
Happy to continue. Would someone like to be the alternate? David's attendance is so good. I haven't need, I haven't needed to actually go. Well, not that I don't want to go, but I, I have not, I, he's been there, I believe, at every meeting. So, but it is the third Thursday of the month. Does anyone want to serve as an alternate? Okay. That will stay as is. School Committee Executive Session Minutes, I think that is me.
That goes to you.
Um, School Committee Legislative Representative, that has been and for some time, MJ.
If anybody would like, again, I open it up especially to the newer members. I'd like for them to engage wherever they feel they have the most interest. So, happy to continue, but I would certainly, wouldn't prohibit anybody else from, um, stepping into it.
I mean, I'd be happy to do it based on some prior experiences, but I don't want to take it away from you. So, I, I'll defer to you. If you want to keep doing it, then stay with it. If not, I'm happy to take it.
I've got, I've got an idea that, I've held it for, for the eight years that I've sat on this board. I, I do enjoy it, but it's always been my, and I defer to the chair to make the final decision, because it's, well, because it's, you're the, you're the one to make that determining factor, actually. Lucky you. Um, I have no problem. I would love to collaborate with you, Jesse, because I think knowing your background, I think, can only enhance the rapport that, uh, you know, I've been fortunate to have with both Senator Tar and Representative Robertson. And I think it, I, I don't see any reason why it would be, you know, problematic. Um, but I, I'd like to, I'd like to see if we could collaborate and have, if that's...
So, two members?
If that works for the chair, if anybody has any...
I don't see that it says there can't be two members. Is that anyone else's understanding? Okay.
Nope.
I don't see why not.
That sounds okay with me?
Good by me.
All right, perfect. School Committee Handbook Protocol.
I'd like to stay on that if I could.
I'd like to stay on it, but if people really wanted to do it, I could give it up. But we do need one more person, because Tom is no longer on the committee.
We'll see. We do need to do, have a meeting.
There is some significant work to be done, yeah.
But it's, should be done probably in one shot, depending upon what's brought forth to the board for approval. Um, so it's not really time-consuming in the least.
I'm willing to do that.
Okay, thank you. Contract Negotiation, oh, do we need this? No?
No.
And we don't need the next one?
No, the next two we do that.
And, no?
We have to add one though.
Okay. Um, so I'm skipping over the Townmaster Facility? Okay. School Committee Family Communication Relations. So, we will, actually, we, we need almost everyone. Um, I'd like, I'd like to remain on that if possible. Just, again, we haven't done as much as I would like to do, so I would like to make some sort of an impact in that before I walk away from it. Does anyone want to join me? Oh, look at that. Everyone could say. Um, all right, so Jay, Joe? And then MJ, do you want to continue as the alternate?
That would be great.
Great.
Thank you.
I think that's it.
I just had one thing, just to go back, not for this evening, but, uh, the, back to the facilities master plan. We, there may want, you may want to discuss that, uh, going forward and maybe not, tonight's not the night, given the hour, but, um, you know...
That's what I thought. There was some talk of...
You know, it's certainly a part of the strategic plan, uh, but, um, uh, certainly the, the opportunity, I think, for the committee to start to get on board with what and where things were left with the schools. Um, I think it is timely and, uh, something to consider. Again, perhaps not for this evening, but, um, in the future.
So, and this, this actual group does not meet, is that correct?
Correct.
But we would like to still have a representative who could then reach out to maybe Town Hall or, so someone who would...
Possibly that.
Serve in that role, possibly.
Certainly work with, uh, myself and our Paul to be, get up to speed with, uh, sort of where things were left off as it relates to the master plan.
Different Subcommittee rather than a representative to the planning committee. It's just our own...
Yes.
Buildings or facility Subcommittee.
Yes, I'd, I'd like to suggest that that be given consideration.
Great. Can we, can we add that now or do we need to officially add it?
No, I think you, I think you certainly could. I don't think there's anything in your bylaws that require that to be voted and approved upon, but actually, that's...
Well, we'll check on, if it need, if it's going to be, well, it's not, I mean, if it's going to be more than one representative, maybe we should just wait on that, but maybe come back next time?
And, and I'd be happy to, you know, develop maybe a proposal, brief as it may be, in terms of what that, the purpose of that might be, but...
Well, okay, never mind. I've got one. Because I was thinking, I was thinking the reason for the basis of this is a townwide stakeholder invite with this, with a superintendent and school committee. I think we had two reps initially...
Yeah.
On that. So, I think that's a great idea, actually.
That's a great idea. So, we'll bring that back next time.
I'll bring it, sure.
Do you want to add, um, the contract negotiation team for the educational assistance, which is currently ongoing?
Defer to Mr. Aguirre on that.
Yes, we, we could.
I'm just, I just...
We're currently in those negotiations now, so we could, and I think going forward, because we'll have, next year, we'll have another negotiating session with another bargaining unit that we would add, but we're not ready to do that yet. But, but yeah, if you'd want, because we're currently, yeah.
Add assistance.
Yeah, we already have two, yeah, I think maybe, because we already have two school committee people that are a part of that.
Who's on that right now?
Joe and I.
Okay. And do you want to, you'll continue in that role? Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Same to the Girl Scouts. The work that happens, happens out of this room, just as much as it happens in this room. So, I appreciate your commitment and time. Thank you. That brings us to public comment. There's so many people here. Someone, oh. Please state your name and address. Thanks.
My name is Brian Kane, seventeen, Lukiah Circle. Um, I'm a lifetime resident of Wilmington. I know some of the people on this board. I have a tenth grader and an eighth grader. Um, I'm also a... I'm also a thirty-three-year, um, coach in Wilmington, but, um, the reason I'm here tonight is just, um, you know, I had some comments about, um, the vaping problem in the school system, and, um, you know, I watched the last meeting, and I thought it was great that there was a committee of both staff and students that was created to address this issue, um, because, you know, it's not good, as you all know. Um, when multiple bathrooms are closed and ambulances have to come to the high school, you know, obviously, that's not a good thing. Um, I just had a few comments and thoughts about, um, you know, the presentation. Again, I thought it was a, a great thing, um, and really, you know, a first step, but, um, you know, I just, I thought, you know, you as a board should almost know, you know, how many high school and middle school students have been suspended this year, how many repeat offenders, um, what have parents' roles been, um, and what currently happens when a student is found vaping. I know there's, you know, there's a policy change in front of you, um, but in terms of that, um, that program that would be offended students and could complete as part of that is an alternative to a suspension, I just wonder if that's a deterrent. If it gets to that point, and, you know, I, I think it's a great thing, but I think it's, to a certain extent, I think it's almost backwards. I think, once you get to that point where you're vaping in school, that information, you know, should have got to that kid a long time ago. So, what I did was, um, you know, I went to vape educate, that's what the present, that's what, you know, the, um, rule change was, um, suggested, and I think vape educate is a great idea, um, but like I said, I think it needs to go further. Um, it should be a mandatory course, you know, from s, starting in fourth grade, um, before it even becomes a problem. Um, and, you know, it was, it was nice to see the Girl Scouts here tonight, and I almost look at those kids and say, you know, get, get this information to them early. The other thing, you know, just, you know, again, I won't keep much longer here, but what I learned at vape educate was that vape educate courses, um, are purchased through licenses. So, for example, um, you know, through you, Mrs. Brison, if I could just pass this out, these licenses, um, you know, it's tiered, it's tiered, so I don't know if there'll be, if there's a hundred suspensions at, you know, the high school or the middle school, and those are, you know, twenty dollars apiece versus, you know, the school, you know, going down to the middle school and, and the north and the west, to go down to two dollars apiece, um, you know, that's, that's a big difference. But, you know, it, the committee said they applied for a grant, you know, I'd just like to see vape educate, you know, go further with students. Like I said, I don't, if it gets to that point, I don't know if it's, not too late, but you want to get to the students earlier and almost make it mandatory. Um, just another couple of thoughts I had, you know, just talking to kids, um, you know, additional community service hours on their own time, that might be a deterrent, rather than, oh, I'm just going to go in and take vape educate and, you know, two hours, I'm done. Um, you know, these fines that I'm hearing, that students would have to pay, might help fund some of this, um, and actually, as a parent, I would have no issue, you know, if it was mandatory for students to pay a fee for this, um, at an earlier age. Um, you know, freshman orientation, parent involvement, um, you know, we heard it tonight, too, just parents as, as active participants, not, you know, sitting on the sidelines. And, um, and that's really it, and, you know, trust me, none of this is, um, I hope it's not coming across as a criticism, 'cause it's not, um, you know, my son's had a great experience at the high school, my daughter's looking forward to coming here, and, um, you know, I know, you know, Ms. Peters, she cares about the students, um, you know, various, my son will get, um, cards in the mail, just recognizing them for different things that, you know, it's written by her, so I think that's, that's great. But I would just like to see this go further at a younger level, um, before, 'cause it's bad. You know, if, if you're closing bathrooms and ambulances, that's, that's not good, obviously, so, that's all I have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For sharing this, we appreciate it.
Thanks.
Quick question. To Dr. Brand, the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, do you know, I know that, that was done early in the spring, do you know if that vaping piece is, um, has been added to that questionnaire, or, I know it's usually been wrapped, kind of, was kind of outdated the last survey that result we, we saw, I don't know what.
I, I will admit, I'm not exactly certain.
Oh.
Ms. Murray's here, can you, sorry to put you on the spot, if you know.
Thank you for your comment, being in the audience tonight, that was very helpful, and I can bring some of that information back to the committee. On another note, we did receive a grant today, we got the email for thirteen thousand dollars to pursue some of this work, and we can talk further about that, um, with the committee. So, I appreciate your comments, and we will work as a group to, um, address some of these issues, especially at the younger age. Um, as far as the YRBS, yes, um, they do talk about vaping, and we did add some questions as a district to look more into that, both at the middle school and high school.
Great, thank you so much.
Yeah, yep, yep, no problem.
Okay. Other reports, any subcommittee reports?
I have one. Today, the School Wellness Advisory Committee bit for the last time this year. I'm happy to announce that Wilmington was, has recently been awarded a seventy-five-thousand-dollar school health grant, uh, from the Department of Public Health called the Model Comprehensive School Health Grant. Monies from the grant will go towards various health initiatives within our district that target infrastructure, qualified staff and nurses, and continues, continuing, um, quality improvement within our health pro, programs. An additional, uh, new initiative that I think is important to mention, um, is the creation, it also funds a creation of, of bridge classroom, and, um, I've heard of these classrooms in other districts. What this classroom will do is those students who may, uh, be out of school for prolonged, um, amounts of time due to medical issues, um, these programs act as a buffering classroom for students to re-acclimate back into their classrooms. Um, it's similar to resource rooms, but not quite, it just allows them to, you know, um, acclimate back into their school classrooms to their needs, which I think is wonderful and long overdue. I brought this up a couple of years ago, but I'm so happy to see that we have funding for this. Um, the committee also worked up, um, worked in updating the parent wellness survey that will, um, ensure questions are pertinent to our current district practices, that will go out to parents, students, and staff to kind of drive, I think, the work in the upcoming year with the wellness advisory and the initiatives, especially as it applies to this grant that we received. And, um, congratulations to Dorine Crowe and the crew for that, their fabulous grant writing, um, for us to be awarded. Only, I think it was fifty-four districts were awarded, um, this grant out of the, out of the state, so, um, thank you so much for the time and effort invested.
Miss Crowe actually is working on a memo that, uh, with intention is going to come to you at your June twelfth meeting to put a little more context around that grant. Um, I know she's been working very hard on that grant, along with Ms. Murray, Ms. Brown LaGrande, Mr. Regorio, I'm sure I'm forgetting some others, but, so, uh, please look for something in your next packet that provides a little more detail. It's a sizable grant, and it does touch upon a lot of different areas across the district, so.
Thank you. Any other subcommittee reports? We are gearing up for policy, so stay tuned. No, seriously, it's, it's this week, right? Not, not this week, the dates were, it's coming your way.
Proposals are coming.
It's coming your way. Um, any correspondence?
Yes, I have one. Dear Wilmington School Committee, thank you for your sympathy and kindness following the passing of my grandfather this month. The flower arrangement was beautiful, sincere thanks, Tristan Dixie.
Any other correspondence? And so, again, with, with sadness and sympathy for Peggy Kane's family and friends, and for all of those who have worked so closely with her, um, on this committee, I just wanted to, sort of took us a little by surprise this morning, and so trying to make sure we made everyone aware of, of what was happening. I do know that the funeral is scheduled for next Wednesday at ten a.m. at the Wilmington United Methodist Church, and I do know that there are visiting hours on Tuesday from three to seven, I just don't have a location on that, so I'll send that in an email, unless someone else knows, but I'll send that in an email.
Thank you.
As soon as we have those details. Future school committee meeting dates, we have the June twelfth, and I see the June twenty-sixth on here, I think that's, we're saving it, so save that date.
It is, yeah, it's save the date, uh, it's not anticipated that there will be a need to have that meeting at this point in time, but certainly will confirm that, um, as soon as possible, but there's not intention right now, if you could just hold that date.
Could I ask a question? Do you anticipate meeting between June twelfth and the third week in August? Not being familiar with your style, I know previously we've at least met once a month or such, just so that when we start school, things aren't completely bogged down the first three meetings, but I just wasn't sure what your, what your thoughts were and what you.
So, we haven't, May, we haven't set any dates specifically yet, but, um, I have talked to, uh, Ms. Brison and Mr. Porke about, um, uh, the possibility of a, of a retreat or something of, of that nature, uh, it'll, so things are still in development, but, um, still to come on that.
Sure.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you. And some upcoming district events, we have May twenty-third, the Grade Six and Seven Chorus Concert, May twenty-eighth, the Senior Banquet, May thirtieth, the Art and Literacy Night, the Woburn Street Elementary School, May thirty-first, Scholarship Night, Wilmington High School Gymnasium, June second, the Graduation, Wilmington High School Gymnasium, and then, this doesn't really apply to us, but the final exams are June sixth through eleventh, and the last day of school for Wilmington Public Schools is June twelfth. Just again, the events that there is nice to have, some school committee members participate would be the Scholarship Night and the Graduation, and then obviously, any of the other events would be great, too, but those are the events where it's great to have a good, a good showing. Okay? Okay, so, we're going to adjourn first, okay, and then enter. Do I need to say this?
Yes.
Do I need a motion for this?
Uh, adjournment for regular session.
But I'm going to read this first, okay. So, we'll adjourn from regular session, we're going to, and I'll need a motion for all of this, we'll enter into executive session, I'm just going to read this as is. The Wilmington School Committee will vote to enter into executive session pursuant to MGL-C30A-S21-A23, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, and to conduct strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares. Okay, do I have a motion to enter to executive session?
Of which we won't return.
Of which we won't return, thank you. Is that first?
I have a motion.
Okay, Mrs. Burns, seconded by Mr. Bjork, yes?
Sure.
And that's a roll call vote? I'm just going to go this way.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.